Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, October 28th, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any public comment this evening? Going once, going twice. Okay, we will move on to item number four. We have Public Works Director Ed Gentile here, who I'm very excited about this, is going to be giving us an update on the Norotin Heights Railroad Station Study. He's going to give us an update on sidewalks and on our solar project. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works. I'm excited about that first topic, too. Let's get right into, I'm going to just give you a really quick chronology of where we started, where we are right now, and go over some of the key features, just to give you some highlights. I know you folks have the reports in front of you. Then we'll talk about what's next and how we continue to move forward. Just this time last year, we had put out RFPs for a feasibility study and preliminary concept design. December, we did conduct interviews of 2018. In January of 2019, we hired a firm Gregory Weiss and Gardner out of New Haven. We had a budget set aside, a design budget set aside, of $75,000. We jumped right into the project in February of 2019. We did have a kickoff meeting with the town, the DOT, and Metro North Rails were all represented. In March of 2019, we had a conference call set up with the DOT. They were a little concerned about the scope of our project, wanted to give us some of their insight and experience and maybe guide us away from any pitfalls that we may come across as we go through this process of design, and kind of bring us up to speed on some of the new building code items and redundancies at the Lykan's Building. I'll touch on that a little bit later. We went right into, in May of 2019, a conceptual design workshop. We spent a couple hours going over different ideas, different philosophies, different locations of the station. And then we turned the architect loose on the design, and we gave him quite a few months to get it completed. And we wanted to have a meeting in August, and I just didn't think that was a good time to have a meeting. There's too many people that were away, too many people that should be participating that wouldn't be able to make it. So we tried for September. Schedules pushed us out. So October, just recently, we did have a, the draft feasibility study and report was presented to the town, the DOT, Metro North, and it's what you have in front of you right now. Some of the key features, improvements to the new station and in our pedestrian overpasses, we do have, and I have the layout in front of you so I can point a little bit to it. So we do have interior and exterior waiting areas. Here's an interior waiting area. This is the rails right here, if you will. This is the station. Up here is Heights Road. So north is up on the page. So interior waiting station. We have exterior plaza areas. One not covered, one is covered. You'll see that when I go to the 3D rendering. We have a concession area inside there. We have a brand-new-designed, watertight, and climate-controlled overpass. It'll go from this to this side over here. This is what they call a headhouse for the opposite side of the pedestrian bridge. We have men's and women's ADA-compliant bathrooms set on the station side. We have two elevators on both sides of the track. When I spoke of redundancy a few minutes ago, this is the part where the DOT was, you need two elevators now instead of one, in case one of them goes down. So we have two elevators actually on both sides of the tracks. Excuse me. And what was important to me, anyway, and I hope I conveyed it to everybody at the meeting, was the layout of the space had to be so that you had access to the pedestrian overpass, but we could lock off portions of the building, which would be the waiting areas, the bathrooms and such. So they were able to do that. So we have a staircase that goes up to the top, and the elevators are always accessible, as you would have the pedestrian overpass now. So we had the elevators put inside, which is going to help the longevity of those elevators. If you know anything about the Darien elevators, I have problems with them constantly. And if not once a week, I'm out there fixing one of them because they're going down. They're going to, the stable in Darien, just an aside, they're going to redesign and put lobbies around them also, to help to enclose those. That project won't be starting until about 2022, but it's part of the platform project over there. So we were able to get that included in their project. But here, they're designed inside. You have access 24/7, and we're able to lock off other portions of the building. And finally, part of the building, the solar, we proposed a solar roof for the station, and I say roof, not panels. These solar, they're solar shingles for the roofs. Something new. We were looking, we are now looking into. Let's spin this around really quick. So some key site and platform improvements. We are going to extend the canopy from the station location now where it is, which is right here, all the way down to Hollow Tree Ridge Road staircase. We are going to add a shelter and bike racks off the west end of that platform down in here. They thought it was a good idea because we had pushed the station so far to the east that we provide something down here. And you'll see that we enhanced the drop-off area. So there's a drop-off area now. It's closer to Hollow Tree Ridge Road, so this shelter could be used, and the canopy's down here now will be a benefit to those folks that want to stay closer to the front of the train. Sorry. We're not sure if this area down here is going to be climate-controlled or not. We're still into the preliminary phase. It's something that we haven't talked about. And we are looking at putting, we only have one shelter so far with the headhouse here. Maybe putting an additional shelter down there, or two, on the New Haven-bound side. We don't have but one. I don't believe that's enough, but we're in the hand, we're in the process of talking about that as preliminary design goes. We expanded the sidewalks throughout the north side parking lot. I'm sorry I couldn't get the whole sheet on here, but that whole new parking lot, all the way down to the depot, has been redesigned, closed in, landscaping added, sidewalks put all the way down to that, to the depot itself. The TOD study that we had done about two years ago, that kind of incorporated all of the developments, the Palmer's Market, the Federal Realty, and our train station, had actually done some designs for sidewalks on the south side already. So now I have a complete plan for both sides. We aligned the entrance and exit with Edgerton, so the exit now for the train station is actually aligned with Edgerton Street. They were going to propose enhancements to lighting and for signage. Like I said, we're going to upgrade the landscaping, and we are going to find places for installing electrical vehicle charging stations on this property. So what's next? November of 2019, I am hopeful that we will obtain the final report from our architect. We did send them back to make some small changes. And hopefully, November, December of this year, we are looking forward, I think, to meeting with the DOT Rails and Metro North to go over what they think of the plan and what they think our next steps will be. This is the DOT's property. We've engaged them from day one. Their feedback is critical, as is their support. So I felt it's necessary now, and now that we have all of our information together is to sit down and kind of look them across the table and see what they feel about and how we're going to move ahead, and what we need to do next. That's me. That's it?
That's it? Oh, gosh. So can I add a few things?
You sure can.
Okay. So you probably can't see this from back there, but these materials are online. They've been given to the media. That's a rendering of what the building will look like. And just to go, did you bring it also?
I did. I'm sorry if I didn't take it out.
So just to go back a couple of steps for our new Board of Selectmen members that are here in the audience and Board of Finance member, we undertook with the assistance of WestCOG a Norotin Heights Station Access Study that was the precursor to this plan. And the objective is, number one, to give us a commuter rail station building that is respectable and ADA compliant. In addition, with the new developments that are now underway, the station gives us an opportunity to help with place-making and to really have the station feel like it's part of the new Norotin Heights community area. And Ed referenced some outdoor sort of courtyard waiting spaces. I believe that there will be some opportunities to utilize this building and this space for some community purposes as well as for commuters. Is that a fair statement, Ed?
Absolutely.
Okay. Were you going to talk at all about the preliminary budget that was attached to this?
It was not.
Okay.
No, you're not? Unless someone had questions about it.
Sure.
Well, I was saving that one.
Yeah. Go ahead, Susan.
I have a question before the budget. So in a perfect world, do we have any idea how long the DOT would be discussing this, embracing this, as far as any kind of timeline? So they have to buy into this whole thing. And then what's after that? Can you keep going on the timeline a little bit more before we even talk about money?
This was the easy part.
And I know it's all preliminary, everything you say.
And timewise, this was the shortest, and it took us a year from start to finish. The one good thing about the DOT Rails is that those gentlemen have been there for a while. I think Darien has a very good relationship with these folks. We do take care of their properties, and we're on top of anything that they have asked us to do down there at both stations. So with that said, getting a meeting to get their input, that shouldn't be the hard part. The hard part is working with them next to take the next steps. And I'm assuming that they're going to want to see the estimate. They're going to want to see us drill down a little bit harder on some of the numbers, and they've already brought that to our attention. And once we do that, I think it's got to take the next step above the Director for DOT Rails. I think it's got to go to the Commissioner before that thing gets blessed, or this project gets blessed, to move forward with anything. I see this as a public-public partnership. I think they see it that way, too. I don't know if they've embraced it. So are you asking me if it's going to take a year or three years? If I had to take a really hard shot at it right now, it's probably around three years. And my understanding and my hope is that the gentleman we're dealing with right now will still be there. I think they will be. And that's, I think that next meeting we have is going to probably roll out a couple of the details that you're looking for. I don't want to kind of guess at those right now. I don't think that's what you want to hear.
No, that's perfect. Okay, now the money. So I like to be straight up about this information. So included in the feasibility study was a preliminary budget, and I want to be very clear that it probably doesn't bear much resemblance to reality at this point in time, but it was an exercise to get some numbers down on a piece of paper to get started. So looking at the bottom line, the, our designer's estimate was for $24 million project. We already know that there's, the cost will be higher than that. There's something in here which I'm not entirely clear what it is. Maybe Ed can define it for us. Something called the Metro North Railroad Force Account. And that seems to be the account that ConDOT and Metro North look to and feel as though it might be underestimated in this preliminary budget at $250,000. So maybe you could just tell us, what is the force account? How is it used, and why would it be underestimated potentially?
The force account that Metro North has you fund for them is the use of their flagman. Anytime they want to protect their rails, shut down a rail, modify approaches to their ramps or their platforms, they actually, you actually pay to have that done. So with what the DOT saw in that number was that they thought it was kind of low. In talking to our contractor that did the estimating for us, his thoughts were, well, we're going to build it differently than we've built different stations, whether we pre-built, modular, whatever we do. We won't do everything right there at the site, right up against the platforms, so you won't need as many hours of flagmen. So the force account may be a bit less. I think that number should go up a little bit, too, just in case there's a change in the way you do your phasing, change the way you do your construction, or something is not built, you can't build it the way they thought they were. So, and as preliminary as this goes, that's what these numbers are. So that's, I mean, that's why it's a little bit low. I think he anticipated building it a certain way. I think the DOT saw you building in place, and I think that was the big difference right now.
What I'd also like to say is that it's important to know that our design team and construction team, Greg Weiss and Gardner Architects and Banton Construction have worked together before, and they've built train stations before in Connecticut on the Metro North Line. So we have great people on this project. They're well-respected by the folks at ConDOT and Metro North, so that really helps us. The other thing that helps us with this project, a couple of things, we have said, I have said from the start, that we know that ConDOT isn't going to come to Darien and say, hey, we'd love to build you a new train station because we've got nothing else to do with our money. So we said from the start that we would like to financially participate in this project in order to get it done. We anticipate that they will likely be able to join us in the financial commitment to this project, namely because this train station is far from ADA compliant. And they bear a lot of liability for having train stations that are not ADA compliant. So I think it's a win-win for all of us. We should have some skin in the game. We have a parking fund that can help support this renovation project, which is terrific. So, you know, we'll keep everyone well updated as we move along in the process of refining this budget and hopefully getting the approvals. But I'm very hopeful. We've got an excellent team in place, and this would be a phenomenal asset to the town of Darien and hopefully the commuters. They've been so patient. And to get canopies, more canopies there, that alone will be fantastic. But we want to get this project done before we have a real problem, especially with the pedestrian walkover. Do they do condition reports every year, Ed?
I believe they inspect it every year. I haven't seen the reports that they put out, but I'm assuming this goes with the inspections.
So with regularity, ConDOT does inspections and condition reports, and this station continues to be a station that's failing. So they have a great incentive, I believe, to continue to work with us, and we've tried to be very good partners. Anything else that you'd like to share about the project?
I think you've touched on everything. I know you mentioned the team in Banton. I know one of the big-ticket items is the pedestrian overpass. I can tell you that both of these companies have worked on those recently. So the numbers we're looking at here are relatively, I'd say, accurate to what we're planning to do up there. So this is, I think this is a good plan. I think it's a good jumping off point to take to DOT now and see what they'd like us to do next.
Yep. And a piece that Ed mentioned, by adjusting the station building itself closer to Edgerton, we're trying to create a more traditional intersection condition at the intersection of Heights Road and Edgerton. And can I share maybe the future possibility?
Sure. I didn't bring it. I sketched one up today. I didn't bring it.
So Ed and I really like the idea of roundabouts. And it's a road configuration that ConDOT seems to favor as of late. It really helps traffic to continue to move, you know, keeps traffic from being congested. And we feel that perhaps in the future, depending on property ownerships, there might be an opportunity to put a roundabout at that Heights Road and Edgerton intersection, which I think would be a terrific road use enhancement, if you will. So I'm excited about that, too. Does anyone have questions for Ed on this feasibility study? Kip?
Kip. Okay. Can we go back to the beginning? Who are the other funders and stakeholders that you mentioned under item one introduction? You mentioned WestCOG, Department of Transportation, Darien, Town of Darien. You have other funders and stakeholders. Can you give me some idea who they might be?
I think originally, when we started talking about that, Kip, there was, there were questions on whether the local developers in that area were going to participate in the station at all in any of the improvements. And I don't think we vetted that with them yet.
So right now, the idea of a public-private partnership is not necessarily in the works yet?
It's, no.
They call it P3 now.
Yes. Public-public-private, public-private participation.
Okay. The next question I had was, under task three, it says meetings with town committee and design team. Who is the town committee involved in this process?
Okay. The first selectman was on the team. Kate Bush, our town administrator. Jeremy Ginsburg, Director of Planning and Zoning. Jim Cameron, I'm going to say, our commuter expertise, and myself from the town.
Okay. Now, you did say earlier on that the architect, contractor, and the engineers were chosen by RFP process, the normal. The mention in here about extending, and maybe you want to show the people in the audience the longer view of the platform, extending the platform canopy down on the New York-bound side. Is that included in the number in the budget, or is that, the budget has a number of $943,000 for extending the canopy. Is that that project, or is it is?
Yes, it is. And it's under optional now.
It's under optional, that's why.
I backed into moving it up and make it permanent.
Make it permanent. Okay, that's my question. And then, speaking of optional, I don't understand what the words mean when it says rerouting catenary power. I know what the catenary power is, to duct banks for a million eight, million nine.
Currently, the lines for some of their offset power for Metro North is over the platforms or just behind the platforms. So as we build, well, the other guy, as we build those headhouses for the elevators, they're actually encroaching into that area. So we would need to run those lines underground to get that station located where it is, or anywhere near the platform at that height.
That's the extra power. It's not their main power on the canopy.
No, it's not the catenaries you see over the rails. It's the side. It's off to the side.
Okay. Because that's a pretty big number.
It is a big number. It's a lot of work.
So you've got a tunnel, basically, right?
We're going to dig, you would dig and you put conduits in the ground?
Yeah.
And then you would offset them down through the catenaries into the ground, to the next catenary, then back up and reconnect.
But not necessarily under the tracks?
No, it would be in the parking lot area.
In the parking lot area, right.
I think you guys remember the concept of a duct bank from the high school cafeteria project.
How does that work with the solar shingles that you were referring to?
How does it work?
Well, I mean, are we, it's both? We need both, or is that just for the trains itself?
That power is for the trains. It's for Metro North.
Are you talking about, speaking of, are you talking about the shingles that Tesla has produced?
Yes. I haven't heard much about them until that meeting, so I'm interested in reading about, more about them.
Yeah, they've been proven?
That's what I need to read more about.
Okay. Another question I had was that you mentioned in here, under optional supplemental parking, 475, where's the extra parking that it be?
They have on the other side of the tracks.
South side?
South side, where we just took down the building. They have us realigning and redoing that whole parking lot over there.
Okay.
And realigning that driveway that goes up. It's offset. They want me to push it over a little bit further.
Okay.
That's all.
So they're gaining some space over there?
I think they said 60 spaces or something over there. I think that's generous, but there's a little bit.
It would be good if they took that curve out of the, that driveway.
I'd like to do that.
Even if it's 50 spaces, that would be phenomenal.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, that's huge.
Now, I gather that under item four, preliminary concept, this is, we're still in concept design, right?
Very preliminary.
Very, very early. Took a year to get there.
It did.
Scares me when we talk about the school that way. Net zero energy building, NZEP strategies. We're going to try, but we're not going to, we're never going to get there.
I think that's a, that's a wish.
A wish, thank you. And the universal design, which is the ADA accessibility, that's just sort of the standards today?
It is.
Okay. And the, do you feel that the two elevators on each side, is that, is that built in suspenders? Can we afford that? Is about a, I imagine that's adding another $300,000 to the project, roughly.
It's not an option.
Yeah, it's not option.
It's not optional. By whose, by whose standard?
State.
State of Connecticut.
So glad I don't get to tell you how I feel about this.
And I was looking back under, I'm sorry, I don't mean to lionize if I have a whole bunch of questions. The, under what was stated as existing conditions in site context, site conditions, we got down to C, neighborhood connectivity and transit-oriented development. What are street, are smart street standards to talk me about in here?
You're implementing safety measures for pedestrians, for vehicular input and bicycles. You're making way for crosswalks or intersections that are safer. It's an implementation to reduce speed, to promote pedestrian use. It's a whole big concept of getting the street, taking the street back from the vehicles and making it more user-friendly.
Like we were talking about in the post road in Darien, if we could have done that. Okay. That's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ed on the Norotin Heights project?
I just, we had talked in some of these meetings about Heights Road itself and the pedestrian crosswalks have, you know, coming because people were running across from Palmer's, and have those been sort of redesigned as well? Is that part of this?
I think we realigned a couple of the entrances, one of the entrances to align with the Palmer development. And I just can't recall if there's a crosswalk there, but we did set up crosswalks for the Edgerton end side of it, too, where they had the new entrances, to kind of promote people to come in from those directions. I don't know, and I don't want to speak for Planning and Zoning, if they've approved mid-block crosswalks for the developments yet. I just don't recall.
I remember that getting raised up at those meetings. So if you'll go down the commuter path from Palmer's, from West Avenue and straight.
They want to come straight across.
Yeah.
And I think the pedestrian path will change potentially depending on the retailers. You know, there was quite a bit of.
Sure.
Pedestrian traffic from Darien Donut, which won't be there anymore, so not knowing what will be there. It's hard to know where the traffic pattern, traffic patterns will be. Yep. Might have more actually coming from the Federal Realty and of that development than we did before. Anything else for Ed on Norotin Heights?
Financing all of this? Excuse me? Financing of all of this? The financing of all of this? Where's the money coming from?
I think as Jamie mentioned recently, the town is looking to partner up, which means there's the parking fund that will be managed to fund from the town's perspective. We hope that the DOT will at least participate in equal, as a minimum. Don't know how that split's going to work out.
For the public, does everybody understand the parking funds, where we have cars parked on state property, which is most of the parking, those funds are collected by the town. We're able to pay for our administrative costs and maintenance costs of the parking lots, but we also must, from that fund, pay for the maintenance of the train stations. We can also pay from that fund for the improvements. So there's a fund there, if you will, a sinking fund or an ongoing fund to help pay or for part of a bond, if you might, for this process, which I think would be probably part of the issues here.
Yeah.
Kate, can we issue bonds against and pay for the debt service from the parking fund?
We could. I'm not sure that it would be what I recommended. A revenue that would.
A revenue, that would be a revenue anticipation bond. You're gonna pay a higher interest cost. So I would rather do GO bonds, which are on the full faith and credit of the town, get a lower interest cost, and have the parking fund reimburse the town for the bonds, similar to the way the sewer fund reimburses the town for bonds.
Get a lower rate.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I would also think that future boards of selectmen, whether it's the next two years or even further out, would look again at the permit, all the parking fees. If we're gonna make this huge, big improvement. I mean, this, everyone that uses the parking, certainly it's residents, but also a lot of non-residents. So that could also, we know that our parking fee is very low compared to most other towns. So that could certainly be in the.
What you're getting basically is you're saying the user is gonna pay for the improvements.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Which is the best of all possible worlds.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct. Okay. Moving on, we will turn to sidewalks now. Yeah.
Little update on our sidewalks. I want to give you a little history. I have been here since June of 2014 and are funded all the way through July of 2020 with money to do reconstruction sidewalks and some new sidewalks. But in my time here, I've put, or I've built sidewalks that have cost $1.2 million. We've done about two miles since I've been here, so that'll be six years. The town has a total of 15 miles along its roadways. Want to hit some of the new construction areas where we've done sidewalks or planned to do new sidewalks or where there were none. We've done recently the Tokonik Road, Olkings Highway South, I-95 Bridge. That's been completed. Ledge Road, I put a sidewalk along the back of the Post 53 from Narroton down to the parking lot, where there was none before. That's been completed. We do have a project coming up on Locust Hill from Delafield Island to Olkings Highway South, looking to do construction in there of April of 2020. The next project is the Edgerton Street. We do plan on putting a sidewalk or have plans to put a sidewalk from Elm, I'm sorry, West Elm to West Avenue. It is in the design phase right now. We have the topography done. We have layouts shown on both sides. We're looking to review that with the first selectman and move ahead with a public information meeting after that.
Both sides?
We're only gonna pick one.
Okay. All right.
But we've laid it out on both sides, so we can see. And the final one we have in the queue right now is the Mansfield Avenue from Overbook to Mansfield Place. It's in the preliminary design phase. We have the topography done. We've noticed that the right-of-way and some of its features, trees, walls, do not leave a whole lot for a sidewalk, so we're gonna need to obtain easements. So currently, we are approaching the neighbors now with letters to see if they have any interest in obtaining or having the town obtain easements on their property to put the sidewalks in. Most recently, September of this year, we did a town-wide sidewalk inspection. I had the foreman look at every sidewalk that we have here in town. And I had him prioritize sidewalk replacements. And at this time, we have a couple phases, if you will, sorry. We have a replacement phase of, you know, what we call phase one of, as soon as, as soon as funds are made possible. We had a second category of phase two of that piece, which is not of high priority, but something that should be completed after the first phase. Then we broke it down to a five-year and a 10-year waitlist. So we had four categories. The total of all those costs came to $3.2 million, or about five miles. I had him also look at localized repairs. We have some concerns with chip hazards and so on. So I had him categorize those also. We broke them down into repairs, need immediate attention, if you will. There was a phase two of that category with a higher priority. Third priority was a medium, low risk. And then there was a low priority of DPW labor only, which means we could go out and fix them ourselves. That estimated cost is around $42,000 to do those repairs. That is something that we're gonna jump on right in the springtime, as soon as we can, to narrow that down.
Forty-two for all of those, or forty-two?
Forty-two in total, for all, for all the repairs. And that's using this contract that we have with our vendor. And we will be rebidding it, but the difference should, you know, we're looking at maybe a 10% difference increase, if anything, just in the concrete alone and labor.
You have funding in place for that?
I do, for the immediate repairs, I do. I do. I've left some money aside to do those now. And just looking to the future, and I and I am putting together a list, and I haven't completed yet, so I didn't want to bring it to you and give you something that wasn't complete. But we do have some areas that we started doing sidewalk work already. We are looking to extend those replacements. One of the areas over at Tokonik Elementary School, along Tokonik Road, we will continue to do that. We have a block already set up. The state roads are a little bit more difficult because we have to get permits for each one, and we have to provide surveys. So we've been working with the DOT to allow us to use our aerial mapping or our GIS mapping in lieu of doing a survey, an A2 survey. They've been receptive so far. There's been a change in the administration up there, and the person that has taken over has, you know, has lots of us finishing the work instead of dragging it out, so it's been a benefit. The other areas over by the developments, we do plan, and we just, actually just finished Edgerton's northern end from Middlesex down to West Elm. With Asfall, we just finished that section up last Friday. We are going to do a section of West Avenue from Hollow Tree Ridge Road to Edgerton. We will leave the section from Edgerton to Narroton unfinished until they're done with the development. They have quite a bit of digging to do up there. And I don't want to put in brand-new sidewalks and have them damage them or have to dig them up to replace them later. That right now is part of the plan. And then another section is the Hollow Tree Ridge Road from West Avenue up to Middlesex, in front of the Middlesex Middle School. That's my next project too. So I have things in the queue that I want to move forward. But I've been asked by the first selectman to give maybe a three- or five-year outlook or, and give a cost estimate to go with that, and I'm working on that now.
On that last item, do you have to do anything special because that sidewalk is so steep?
Which one is that?
The one on Middlesex up to the, up to the middle.
Hollow Tree?
Yeah, Hollow Tree.
No, there's no special treatment or any, no special type of construction I have to do because of the slope of the road.
Those look like they're starting now. Is that, am I wrong?
Which ones?
Like on West Avenue?
We did. We had to replace a drainage pipe underneath. So I had the DPW guys do a drainage pipe installation, which was something they don't normally do, but they did well at it. We replaced some millings down there. We rolled them out. We're supposed to start that sidewalk this Friday, weather permitting. If not this Friday, it'll be next Monday. You'll see the VMS boards go up tomorrow, notifying the public of the work.
Great news.
Yeah, all of it's great.
I guess in summary, there's a lot of sidewalk activity going on.
There is.
And we'll see, you know, schedules put together that will be easier for us to keep tabs on.
I like that. The one thing that Darren and I had an in-depth conversation about about an hour ago was how do you get as much work as we have listed done? And how do we do it so you get the quality and you follow the contractors and making sure that they provide you that quality? And we talked about time. You know, what is our time? And we do spend time out there in the field. He's out there every day, the contractor's out there working, making sure that the smallest of details are completed properly. So as we look to a three-and-a-half-million-dollar construction budget to repair these sidewalks, we also have to look at the time that it takes to do all that work. And I don't feel that we need to sacrifice quality. Not for, not for this type of work, not for something that needs to last. So I have to balance that a little bit, and that's been the difficult part.
Questions for Ed on sidewalks?
Well, I'd just say, I'm really happy to see them. It's been a number of decades since I commuted to New York. My neighborhood is Narroton Avenue down near the Post Road, down in that area. A number of my neighbors walk to the station. And it has been, when I was commuting, it was very hazardous. So I'm really happy to see the new sidewalk down behind the Post 53. I'm looking forward as to straightening out the access between the upper and the lower levels on the soft sides and making it a little safer. It would be embarrassing, perhaps, to the town for me to quote how many years it's been since I've been looking forward to this. I'm happy to see it.
Anything else on sidewalks? Okay, then just a minute on our solar projects, please. The eagerly anticipated activation of our solar installations.
Okay. Where to begin? Well, let's begin from the start. Let's put you in a frame of mind of how long this has actually taken. We, myself and Craig Flaherty actually applied for the Z-Rex in July of 2017. It took us a while before we interviewed companies, made presentations to the board of selectmen, and hired Encon in April of 2018. I think, and I know, that the contract between the town and Encon probably took the longest. It took us almost two and a half months between the lawyers going back and forth. So that is quite a bit of time went by, just getting us set up and ready to go. But once they were given the go-ahead and they did their design and filled out all of the applications, you're dealing with the Green Bank and with Eversource. We did start the police department in October of 2018, and we completed it in November. The annual savings you'll see from that building is about $7,200 a year in electric use. They then moved over to the DPW garage in 2018 in November and completed that in December of 2018. An annual savings projected is about $5,800 per year. Darien Town Hall was the last one. We started that in January of 2019 and completed it in February of 2019. Projected annual savings is $11,000 per year. We were all excited when they're all completed. Wanted to turn them on. We were told by the Green Bank, we could not turn them all on until they were all installed. We couldn't turn them on one at a time. That was something that they kept out of the presentation when we first brought on the contract. I didn't think any of them knew that. But we had them all up and ready to go. We had a ribbon cutting in April 2019. And then we sat and we waited for permission to turn these on, and we waited. And I chased Encon around. I sent them emails once, twice a week. It got to the point where he finally getting back to me, finally got some information back on them. And then in July of 2019, we had some requests from Green Bank to update some information on the police department and the town hall. Again, waited, heard nothing back, was put on hold, if you will. So September of 19, the Green Bank investor requested additional information on our systems. In the same month, September 2019, we finally got some updated interconnection agreements with Eversource. This is what took all the time before we could do the construction. So basically, we had to start over for two of the buildings. And mainly because of two pieces of equipment, which is very frustrating. They call these inverters. And you have them on the roof of your building, and it handles the power and converts it. The inverter that was on the plan, I'll give an example, was 30K, the size of it. They put in a 33K. And they made them go back now on both of these buildings and do them. Why, I have no idea. They won't explain it to me. All of a sudden now, just come last week, we have our contractor and a representative from the financing people taking tours of our building, all three facilities now. And what I'm hearing is that they're looking to tie in another investor now, instead of the one that they had that didn't cooperate with them. So I am at a loss to tell you, and answer my last question here is, when? I can tell you that the Town of Darien has not spent any money on these installations, if you will. All we've lost is opportunity. So when we sit down with Encon and we do turn these on, I'm gonna ask the question, is 20 years still 20 years now? We're supposed to have these systems. That's my update.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your honesty and all the detail on that. It's very unfortunate. It sounds like it's bureaucracy that's holding it up.
Question to us?
Yeah.
Our building, our school building. Could it go through that again?
Yep.
No way.
Be careful.
Yep.
It sounded so simple and so easy and so straightforward. And for letting you can't understand it.
Yep.
Any other questions on the solar?
Yeah, who is like in charge of that process? Not from the town's side, I understand that. But who is like the coordinating person, actor amongst those, you know, Eversource and the Green Bank and the...
Well, you hire a company such as Encon and their representative to shepherd your project through, if you will.
Okay.
And their connection with the Green Bank is the financing. The connection with Eversource is the mechanical part of it, the connection and the part about the power and the metering piece of it, so.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Ed? On any of the topics this evening? No?
No, I just have one thing to say. Ed, I know you missed our department head meeting, and Darren did a great job. We missed you. But I think many of us, and especially, I wanted to say thank you very much because you've been a phenomenal head of public works. And I'm so glad that you joined our team, and you really have, every question that's been asked, as far as I'm concerned, you've been right there with it. So I totally appreciate it, and I hope the residents understand the dedication and the hard work that you put into the town, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the kind word.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much for all your time and updates, Ed. Okay, first selectman's report, a couple things this evening. I am very, very happy to tell you that we received notice today that the Town of Darien has received bronze certification as a sustainable CT community. The process of detailing and applying for this distinction has been about a year in the making. I want to thank all the members of the Advisory Committee on Sustainability, Chairman Craig Flaherty, Carolyn Bain, Dan Dulsetti, Terry Gaffney, Christine La Genet, Beth Luongo, and a special mention of thanks to Kathy Finnegan, who spearheaded the application process along with Craig Flaherty. Also, a big thank you to the staff, who helps support the committee's work in digging up all the data that needed to go into that application. Our certification is effective through December 31 of the year 2022. The committee will come before the Board of Selectmen with a review of their process and a recommendation on whether to pursue the silver certification over the next two years. It's not an easy task. And, you know, we'll have to see if they see an opportunity for us to accumulate the points necessary to receive that silver certification. Darien's accomplishments will be celebrated at a Sustainable CT event in New Britain this Wednesday, and then again at the CCM conference in early December. Today, I was honored to host a press conference here at Town Hall with Scott and Callie Hapgood, U.S. Senator Richard Blumenthal, State Senator Carlo Leoni, and Representative Terry Wood, calling for the United Kingdom and the Angolan government to guarantee Scott's safe passage and support, along with, sorry, safe passage and to and from Anguilla, and a fair and transparent legal process as he challenges the manslaughter claims before him. Coming together in a bipartisan show of support, along with all the Hapgoods friends and supporters here in our community, will hopefully get the attention of our State Department, White House Counsel, and the UK and Angolan governments. I have great faith that if afforded a fair process, the evidence will show that Scott should be released and all charges dropped immediately. On Friday, Mark and Kip and I attended the groundbreaking ceremony, albeit... Um, on Friday, Mark and Kip and I attended the groundbreaking ceremony, albeit quite after the fact, at the Royal Senior Housing Development at seven nineteen Post Road. In addition to members of the Housing Authority and the JHM Group, the Housing Authority's developer partner, representatives from the Department of Housing, DECD, CHAFA, and their funding partners from the Bank of America and the Richmond Group were in attendance. We were told that the project is on schedule for opening sometime between May and September of two thousand twenty. Um, as I'm sure you know, uh, with Donna Radeski is not running for reelection for town clerk. Um, she has tendered her retirement notice, and her last day in Town Hall will be December thirty-first of this year. So please stop in and thank Donna and wish her well in her retirement. Um, just a note too, to add to my report, we've gotten several inquiries in my office today about Halloween. And the inquiries asked if the first selectman could change Halloween from the thirty-first to the weekend, when the weather's supposed to be better. So, I, I shared that, you know,
Your responsibility.
There were two very unfortunate circumstances in my tenure where I actually had to cancel Halloween, and I felt like the Grinch. Um, but that was because the town of Darien was in a state of emergency after, um, big storms. So, no, we would not in fact change Halloweening. Um, it's not a state holiday, it's not a federal holiday, uh, and I know it's super inconvenient to have your kids out on the streets, getting wet in the rain, but parents could certainly make other plans with their neighbors and friends to have a plan B in case the weather's really terrible. But there is no role for local government in Halloween this year, unless there's a storm emergency. Um, and last but not least, and I won't go on too much because I'll get far too emotional tonight. This is our last meeting of this Board of Selectmen, and I just want to take a moment to thank each and every one of you for the wonderful work over the last two years of this particular administration. And I hope that when you drive around town and you see the things that we've been working on with all of the, the other boards and commissions and the RTM, I hope you feel the same sense of pride that I do, and I'm so grateful for all of your hard work and collegiality and teamwork. And I know at least several of you will continue in town service, which is wonderful. Um, and we're looking forward to having some new members to the Board of Selectmen to continue the work in the same spirit. So, thank you very much, I really appreciate all that you've done for the town. Okay, so I thought I'd just, um, give a few minutes for my board members if they wanted to say a couple words.
You're next. Want me to?
It, it, thank you, that was lovely, and, um, I did speak at our, uh, quarterly department head meeting, and felt like I was quite thoughtful then, and I'm feeling a little emotional tonight and probably going to keep it short and sweet, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you very much, and that's one of the points I wanted to make, is the, the way, uh, the way we've worked together as a board. Um, Kate, the way we've worked with you and, and your direct reports and their reports generally, I'm really, really very pleased with the, the town employees, with their, their dedication and, and their expertise, and, and they've, uh, they have, they have absolutely not been difficult, uh, from my point of view. I do, uh, I, I am, I'm very proud to have been nominated and elected twice, and so I, I have to thank the Democratic Com- Committee as well. If I can just be partisan for that five seconds.
That's how we all get here.
That's how we all get here. I think that's enough, I, I, I want to do a particular call out to Channel seventy-nine Public TV. So my, uh, my assignment has been not only, uh, here at the Board of Selectmen, but also on a building committee and, and also on the White Review Board. So, uh, there are some times, you know, when, uh, you're talking about things and you wish the camera wasn't on, you know, but on, on the, uh, on the whole, there's the camera, on the whole, it's, uh, I'm sure it adds a lot to, uh, to the effectiveness of town government and the, you know, the ability of, uh, of the townspeople to, to see what's going on. So I, I just, uh, one, just one last comment, and we, but we're working now, and the next board will be working at a, in a time of major changes in Darien. And we've tried very hard to anticipate, um, all of the impacts on everything that goes on around here. And we probably didn't think of one or two, you know, but, uh, uh, I think the planning is good, and I'm hap- I'm really delighted to have been a part of it, so thank you everyone.
Thanks, Mark.
So I guess I'm the last one to go, um, first I want to welcome the new members, um, to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance. Um, I think everyone that's running, um, it's going to be an exciting time for Darien because there's a lot of new faces, new blood, some people turning, changing over from board to board. But, um, it's been a pleasure, uh, for six years, uh, as we said, we talked about the department staff. And Kip, I think at the, you said it so well at, at the debate, um, we have a lot of phenomenal employees in the town, and I think sometimes residents underestimate that. Again, that's what I said to Ed, and, um, Kate does a great job, um, leading the staff, and, um, and it's been a pleasure, Kate, in your role that, that you came over from finance to town administrator, you don't roll your eyes at us, you're supportive. Our last time administrator used to like roll his eyes. Um, it's been a great, um, it's been a great experience working on, uh, with the board, um, Mark and, and Kip for, for four years, and, and Pam, um, for two. It's, it's, we've always, always have an agree, but I think we've always been able to ta- talk things through, and, um, I, um, I don't even know how to start with Jamie, I think that, um, I, I just wish that the town, um, could understand how much this woman gives to the town, how much of her time, personal time, family time, um, she does a phenomenal job. She tries so hard to represent us, whether it's in town or in the state, she, she just leads us, um, she's a perfect example of what government is all about. And we're so fortunate that she has, um, agreed to stay on and, and lead the next board, and I know you're going to learn an awful lot from her. And Kip will be right there as a support system, but, um, Jamie, we're, um, we're just indebted to you, and, um, it's, it's been a pleasure, you've, you've taught me a lot, um, you've taught us all a lot, so thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and, uh, thank you to all the residents out there. We may not be perfect all the time, but we certainly try to listen, um, everyone not, might not like what, what they hear all the time, but, um, my parting would be, if people could be a little kinder to one another when they disagree with things, whether it's at a public hearing or during public comment, we're all trying our hardest. We're all volunteers, or the majority of us are volunteers, we've got phenomenal volunteers in town, and you may not always agree, but there's no reason to be disrespectful. Um, people try their hardest, so maybe everyone could just have a little more kindness in their heart, I don't mean to be so melancholy, but that's kind of my message to people out there, so, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you so much, Susan, and Mark, and Pam, really appreciate it. Um, that's a little bit of a segue, and I'll finish up, and we'll move on to Kate's report. Um, I will be reaching out to each of you individually to get, uh, your pulse on what's transpiring with the Pear Tree Beach project. I really want to hear from you before your tenure on the Board of Selectmen is up on that. You know, I think it's important to remember that, that we are working through the process, and as a board, we might have some personal thoughts, and I'll hope to glean those from our conversations, but as a board collectively, it's not time yet for us to have an opinion on that. The project will, uh, perhaps come back before us at some point, and we will be given all the information that we will need to make an informed decision on whether to move that project forward. Um, so there's, there's a lot going on, and, um, I appreciate your comments about, about, um, uh, civil discourse. I think it's digressing a bit with this project, um, and that's needless, you know, the people on that building committee are working very hard. Um, I have to shout out to Mike Segrow because, um, I think that he's meeting with every single person that has questions on the project individually. So that's remarkable, um, and I really appreciate that. So, um, you're not off the hu- hook yet, before, before next week, I'll be reaching out to you to, um, get some comments and thoughts from you on that project, okay? All right, yes, Kim?
Just one little
Yep.
not well-known fact, in the last four years, Mark and I have had the same questions, more often than not. And I mean, I look at him and, well, that's my question, he says, look, but it's, it's amazing how we often have exactly the same questions. And I think that's sort of indicative of how we've been working on this whole process, enough said.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, moving on to Kate's report.
Yeah, um, it's hard to follow that all. Um, on behalf of the staff, I want to thank you for your kind words, uh, we really do have a terrific staff, and, um, and they'd also would thank you all for the time you put in and the consideration that you give to the items that they bring reporting. Onto the more mundane, um, Halloween also happens to be the deadline for renewing your parking permits with no late fee. So, boo. That's our little ad for that. Um, the Youth Commission has established a Facebook page, so if you're interested in events that the Youth Commission puts on, please go and like their Facebook page. And, um, the Health Department is putting on flu clinics, you'll find information about that on Town's Facebook page, on the webpage, um, Twitter, social media. I believe the next one's tomorrow, um, but we do have flu vaccine, and we have clinics.
Thank you very much, um, we have several appointments this evening. Um, with your permission, I will read all of them, and hopefully we can vote once, does anyone have an objection to that? Okay, um, we would like to reappoint Tom Joyce to the Police Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. We'd like to reappoint Mary Ann Castell, uh, to the Architectural Review Board for a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And also reappoint her as the Town's Historian for a term expiring on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion to approve those appointments? Susan moves, Pam seconds, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Um, we have regular meeting minutes of October seventh. Let me know if you have any corrections or additions, I can see some notes on yours.
Right, um, Jamie's report was passed out, sorry for me having that.
Yep.
I have one question, do we need to add that we had guests at that meeting or not, because they did speak, so?
Um, I believe they're noted where they spoke.
Okay, that's fine, yep.
Well, first, my note was on, on page two at the top, where it starts with, "The motion Miss Sparkman moved." I just thought it would be clear to say, "To authorize acceptance of a gift to the town of Darien from the Darien Athletic Foundation and Darien Foundation for construction of a weed beach, meadows, and walking trail," I mean it-
So just reverse the order of the sentence.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then, Jamie, I didn't know what your comment was under C in the middle paragraph, where you said, "Miss Stevenson said there had been conflicting information," I don't remember that.
The fire department said that they were the first to on all, um, they were the responsible party on all water
Activities.
activities, and the police department, um, their, what do you call it, their
First responders.
their orders, or their, um, yeah, their protocol, their procedures state that they are, with the exception of fires.
Okay, if that's what it meant.
Okay, anything else?
On page four at the bottom, under F, I think the first line word reads, "Miss Bush explained," I guess ends up saying, "Funding is needed to get this building."
Yes.
That's all.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I forgot to talk to Ed about the generator, I'm so excited, I can't wait for that to happen.
Any other changes? Okay, um, if there are no other changes or additions, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So it moves.
Moves.
Second.
Mark seconds, all those in favor? Great, okay, and then we have, uh, special meeting minutes of October seventh. Susan moves. You have a second?
Second.
Kip seconds, all those in favor? Okay, um, we have no agenda review tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Perhaps Pam wants to, and maybe Mark seconds? Okay, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much.